We're at the City of Dan Allen City Council meeting on June 13th, 2022.
Recording in progress.
It is now four, 5:35 PM. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A country nation unified by the United States of America and due to regard that for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please remain standing if there's someone attending that would like to speak. Yes. Thank you, Tom.
Quite a crowd here this evening. I don't know if anybody's in trouble. I hope it's not me. Usually that's when we have this big a crowd. So let's pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings you have been bestowing upon this town. And Father, may we, as your people, recognize and come to you in humility, Lord, just saying, Lord, that we don't have all the answers, but we know that you do. So may we always seek your face, Lord, when it comes time to make these decisions for this city. May you bless this council, Lord, with knowledge, wisdom, and discernment, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanschar. Here. Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kevina Giseppe tonight. Troy Sodery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Denowski, Records Department.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawkes.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board, on Thursday, July 9th, 2022.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. City Council, do we have any comments regarding the agenda that is currently being presented? Any comment? No comments. Okay, before we go to the next item, the public comments on non-agenda items, I want to clarify this, that if you want to speak to anything whatsoever, you can speak to it as long as it's not on the agenda. But it doesn't include a presentation. I will be giving a presentation as number nine, which means there will not be comments after my presentation. So if you have a comment, you make a comment right at the beginning when we go. Do it. Now, if something's on the agenda that's going to require a vote, then you make your comment on that during the vote. So if you signed up wanting to speak to Agenda Item Number Nine, you should speak at the beginning of the meeting because that's a presentation which I will give. And what I will say about that presentation, I think the presentation I will give will clear up a lot of the questions that you may have. My presentation is going to focus on the safety issues that the city is dealing with since the Blue Run Park ordinance was passed. So I'll be focusing on that. And we'll be telling you a little bit about what we've been doing. We knew when the Blue Run Park ordinance was passed and adopted on April 1st that it would take approximately 60 days or so to just see how it's operating, how it's working, and then to deal with whatever wrinkles that are coming up. And right now, the city is dealing with the wrinkles that have come up outside of what we were expecting. That ordinance was passed for a couple of reasons. One was to give the police the empowerment to enforce the rules that are based on the management plan. The second part of the ordinance was to remove commercial activity from the park, which was never supposed to be there at any time. That was part of the original agreements. So those two things are what we're examining right now. The enforcement of the rules that are now in ordinance that give police ticketing power and examining how successful we've been with eliminating commercial activity within the park. So we have been working on these things. Council, this is the only time we can talk to each other. Council's going to hear some of the things that's been worked on by the chief, Andrew, myself, and maybe them. I don't know what they do in between meetings because we can't communicate. So maybe they're involved with this also. So before we get started, I'm going to invite Chief to come up and explain what he has been doing, dealing with some of the issues that we've been dealing with. Chief, would you like to come up? And then immediately after Chief's presentation, our presentation is talk, we will invite anybody who wants to speak. Whoever has signed up will be called first. Anyone who hasn't signed up will still be given an opportunity to speak. Chief?
Well, before I did make an announcement, I think it's going to lower the temperature of some things, I would like to address what the police did over the weekend. On the water, they wrote four disposable tickets, one speed violation, one expired registration. The next one involves David Kruger and Paula. I know you're in the audience.
Well?
Yes, ma'am. They have complained about people parking their boat there outside their house and drinking on shore. We wrote citations for that. That was pretty good. This is what happened in Dan Allen over the weekend. We got a garden license by suspended case, but I'll go into more detail of that later. We got a petty theft, which we also resolved in the search of the pocketbook of the rest of possession of heroin. So it's on the rise here in Dan Allen. Retail theft, the subject is known, so we're getting warrant for him. We also got a failure to register motor vehicle possession of methamphetamine, possession of cannabis, and possession of drug paraphernalia. Officer Rains, on his way home, really after midnight, had a lady pass him doing over 95 miles an hour, weaving on the highway. He did stop her, called Marion County Sheriff's Office because he was almost off duty. He had been working more than 14 hours that day anyway. And she was charged with driving under the influence. Now, the second half of this first one, driving while license suspended. The driver was arrested for driving while license suspended and also had possession of paraphernalia. The second subject was charged with trafficking in heroin. That's a lot of heroin. That's a first degree felony. And all that's just over the weekend. So now, as the mayor said, we have been talking, putting our heads together, thinking. So this afternoon, between Andrew, myself, and the mayor, we have come up not with an answer, but what we would think would help a lot in simple resolution. And that is put at Blue Run Park, put an outline of the map, and put no tubes beyond this point. Pretty simple.
No tubes yet at which point?
The council would make the decision at what point that it would be. So we haven't been just...
So what does that do?
No discussion with Chief. He has given his presentation.
Yep.
You will have an opportunity to speak.
So anyway, that's what the final thing that we have come up with. And I think once council discusses it, it becomes up to council where they make that issue or make the resolution. All we, all that can do is suggest.
All right, Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm impressed.
Okay, before we get started on the public comment, I just have some house cleaning to do. Please turn your phones off if they're going to ring. If you're going to come up and speak, please give us your name and address. We have a lot of people wanting to speak. I will really have to hold everyone to the three-minute period. I've already had several people call me and ask if they can have more time. I'm yelling here. It's three minutes. Say what you need to say. I think we're going to have 15 or 20 people signed up to speak right here, and we still have business to go. One thing I want to say that I haven't said it for a while, that this council will go out of its way to respect everyone who has come and visited us. We want you here. We love it that you're here, and we will respect you in every way we can. At the same time, council expects the same respect from those that are in the audience. We are basically volunteers that live in the city, that are volunteering our time to help run the city. And as chair, I will not allow anyone to come up to the podium with their intent to embarrass, disgrace, dishonor, or inflame or hurt someone's reputation. That will not be allowed to happen. So please be advised that everything you say is being recorded. It is on public record, and it is something that can be retrieved in the future. So that's what I ask. This is a city business that handles city business in a professional and a courteous way with objectives and goals in mind. No disparagement, no embarrassment, no trying to bring dishonor to anybody that's sitting at this desk. All right, with that said, Ms. Odom, would you like to start from the top? Whoever signed up, if you want to speak to the Blue Run Park or anything about it, this could be the time to do it.
Okay, on the first sign-up sheet, which is the non-agenda item, I have Don DeWitt.
Don DeWitt, your first name and...
Now, when I signed that, I didn't realize that number nine was an agenda item. So I'd be happy to retreat and wait for...
No, you can, no, it's not. It's a presentation, so it's not voted on. So if you want to speak to number nine, you can.
Okay, so my name's Don DeWitt. I know the 19665 Fox Trail, Dan Allen, 34432. I just wanted to say something about the Blue Run Park. For years, since I think 2008, as long as I can remember, we've been trying to limit commercial vehicles in there. You all came up with the ordinance. You've worked very, very hard at it. You scrutinized it, and you voted on it, and it is now an ordinance. So if we have to define what an ordinance is, we can do that. But it's something that the police can control, right? And so if a commercial vendor has his spokes coming through Blue Run Park as number 23 on the ordinance states, there's no commercial use. So why are they using it? And why can't our police enforce that ordinance and issue tickets? It seems like a no-brainer, a non-starter. So why are we even arguing about it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom.
Mary Ann Ermatinger.
Name and address, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Ermatinger, 10350 Southwest 190th Terrace, Dan Allen, 34432. I'd like to read a letter into the record presented by Ida Horton. She's on the Rio Vista Civic Association. She's treasurer, and she's also head of security. But she's out of town with her husband on vacation, so I would like to read it. And I'm going to read it fast because it's timed.
Thank you. Just read it so we can understand.
Okay, I'm a little, like, 20 minutes over, 20 seconds. I am writing to you today regarding an incident that occurred on Sunday, May 29th, 2022. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting and would like this presented before the council on behalf of all the Rio Vista property owners. As treasurer and head of park security, I was notified of two KP Hole shuttle vans pulling into the private park belonging to Rio Vista and unloaded approximately 30 people. Residents that were present in the park were outraged. Billy Carroll, a member of park security, immediately came to my home to inform me of this event. As I arrived at the park a few minutes later, I overheard the driver of one van say, "Hurry up and get your stuff and get in the park." I approached the driver and asked him not to leave and that he needed to take the people back with him. At that time, a passenger said, "No, we're not leaving. Hurry up and get in the water." I returned home to get my vehicle and drove to the KP Hole. There, I asked to speak to the person in charge of the KP Hole shuttle buses. I explained to them the events that had just happened. They informed me that no one was authorized to use their shuttle buses to drop off at unauthorized locations. They also told me that the buses were not KP buses, but were from Rainbow River Kayak Adventures. They informed me that they are only to use dedicated KP Hole buses at the KP Hole for drop-off and pickup at Blue Run Park. They used the buses with the KP Hole logo because RRKA is not authorized to pick up at Blue Run Park. KP Hole offered to investigate the matter by contacting RRKA. I asked that they have the owner of RRKA call me. The manager called Bobby Valio, left me a message to call him back. I promptly returned his call. I was told that he had accidentally put the group on the wrong buses. In addition, he stated that the buses had been ordered by the city commission to drop people off at our park, and the resident would let them in. His explanation did not explain why he was using our park and bypassing the KP Hole. It was wrong on all accounts. Our park is owned by all the homeowners. It is used by residents only and is not for commercial or profitable use. I asked Mr. Valio if he charged the people using his services. He reluctantly said yes, and that he was to take them to the park and pick them up at, I have four more lines, and pick them up at Blue Run. He apologized repeatedly and stated that, quote, "It'll never happen again." He was correct, I told him. You bet it won't. And though I appreciate your apology, I am unsure if I can accept it. I informed him that I would need to contact our legal counsel and see if trespassing charges would be filed against the owner of RRKA LLC and the bus riders. Once again, he pleaded that he would never drop people off at the Rio Vista Park again. On behalf of all the residents of the Rio Vista community, we appreciate your time to investigate this matter. And then she said, "Her future correspondence I can be reached at." She gave me the email. Do you want me to announce that?
What's that?
She said, "Her future correspondence is I can be reached at." And do you want me to announce that? At her email address? Do you want that public?
It's public record.
It's public record. You can read it out. Is that the last thing you're going to do?
Yeah, that's it. It's period, sincerely yours. Her email address is HortonBlueRun@Comcast.net. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Odom?
David Robertson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I own property 19160 East Pennsylvania Avenue here in Dan Allen. It's a commercial parcel, and then there's a residential behind it. I'm doing business in the county. I own Blue Run Cart Master and River Rat Rentals. We are a vendor of the river. Again, I said this a couple of weeks ago to some other people in this very room. I did not know the mess I was getting in four years ago. But we do not do tubes. We do not go through all these other hassles because we want to see this city grow. We want to see progress. We're not going to get progress if we're not all on the same page. I don't care what side of the fence you lay on. If you can't obey authority, then why should you get respect? Why should somebody give something to you? I have to obey the rules. Everybody else should have to obey them too. If we all obey them, we might get somewhere. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Ms. Odom?
Wally Dunn.
My name's Wally Dunn. I live at 11386 Southwest Hendrick Drive, which is on Blue Run. I have noticed a tremendous increase in the quality of the water this summer versus where it has been over the last three or four years. I attribute that to the amount of floating that goes on this river. Having said that, Hendrick's Drive is a road that turns north off of 484. If you go straight across that road south, it's San Jose Boulevard. The last month, I have seen white vans with trailers parked on the right side of the road. I've seen them parked on the left side of the road. I've seen them parked at an intersection. And I've been down there and noticed now that it looks like our police chief, along with some other folks, have put up no parking signs. They have put them on the right, and they put them on the left, and they put them on barricades, and they put them, they painted orange all over the roads. I'm not very sure what all that's about. But it appears that we're trying to prevent somebody from doing what they have been doing. And I have a simple solution to this. Apparently, we have a vendor who may have authority to be in our park, but is going past his authority and is dropping off or picking up people in Blue Run Park that he's not authorized to do so. So he goes to San Jose Boulevard and picks them up and asks them to walk through the park and come out on the overflow park. I think this vendor ought to be terminated immediately, or if that can't be done because this has all been worked out through Marion County, then as soon as his contract is renewed, he should be immediately notified. His contract will not be renewed. Or as an option, we go to Marion County and sit down with the commissioner and say, "You have hired a vendor who violates our rules. Therefore, he is not allowed to pick up anybody in Blue Run Park, regardless of whether he signed a contract with you or not." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Odom?
Kathy Dunn.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrick Drive. As a citizen of Dan Allen, I would like to render an opinion regarding the current violation of the Blue Run Park ordinance on a self-serving business owner who is unwilling to accept the wishes of the citizens at large. An ordinance was unanimously passed that was designed to limit commercial vendors operating out of a passive park designed for the enjoyment of walkers, bikers, paddlers, and tubers. Blue Run Park was never, ever designed to function as a hub for commercial profit, similar to the Ray Davidson Boat Basin that serves the Silver River. The Boat Basin was redesigned many years ago to accept this large amount of commercial traffic for kayakers from Silver Springs, from the Silver River. There is a charge for its use. Our facility is not large enough to handle the amount of commerce that has been taking place in Blue Run Park for many years now. As a response to public outcry, our city council undertook a plan to remedy the abuse that has taken place. This was a significant cost to the taxpayers from research, input by knowledgeable citizenry, council time, and legal fees. Finally, a unanimous council passed a new ordinance based on these efforts. I'm dismayed to find that the owner of Kayak Adventures is blatantly disregarding the wishes of the people to limit commercial use of Blue Run Park. The owner has currently found a loophole in order to continue to personally profit despite the ordinance. I'm offended at the lack of good faith shown to our local taxpayers by this businessman. If allowed to continue, many more vendors will line up on San Jose Boulevard to pick up tubers. This is not fair to the residents of Dan Allen Heights and users of the Little League Field, homeowners in Indian Cove, or renters in the Rainbow Rivers Club. Our citizens should respect the spirit of the intended use of Blue Run Park for the good of the community. If this continues, I have no choice but to lobby for severance of a contract with Kayak Adventures from Marion County. I plead to need with, write, and call the elected representatives of Marion County who granted Kayak Adventures the contract to pick up tubers and kayakers from KP Hole. The contract could then be awarded to a business owner who respects the wishes of the citizens of Dan Allen and custodians of Blue Run Park. Kayak Adventures has demonstrated that they are willing to work outside of the scope of the law in order to profit for their company. This is unacceptable, and Marion County should respond in kind to sever the relationship with KP Hole and Kayak Adventures. In November of 2020, the citizens of Dan Allen indicated that a change in our city leadership was needed and elected three new city councilmen for our legislative branch of government. Since that time, the council has implemented changes that have been needed for many years. These changes are leading Dan Allen into a better way of life for the people that live and pay taxes here. We must be ready, willing, and able to enforce our laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Odom? Everybody, everybody keep in mind, three minutes. We've got a lot of people that want to talk. Get to your point. You can do it. Just tell us what you want to say and why.
William Liver, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Room. I want to take us back to the very beginning of Blue Run Park so that we understand how we got where we are. Back in 2008, when Blue Run Park was created by Rainbow River Conservation with a couple of partners, including Dan Allen and Marion County, one of the requirements of Florida Communities Trust was to have rules. And so we developed rules back in 2008. And then again, in 2015, we reinforced those rules with a resolution. And then again, in April the 1st, we have a new ordinance in Dan Allen, which is basically the same rules. If you look at the rules from 2008 and you look at the rules from just recently, you'll find that they're almost the same rules. One of the rules that's in the FCT requirements, which is in the warranty deed, the city agreed to, and also in the grant contract, is that there would be no commercial use. That's part of the FCT program. The FCT program at Blue Run Park was created for conservation purposes. That's the purpose of it. Passive recreation and protection of the natural communities of the park. It is not for business or for commercial uses. So the operation by Kayak Adventures has been an illegal operation from the very beginning. It has never been a legal operation. It operated illegally for a long time, and it's operating illegally today. Now, just to go through a couple of points. There were no other liveries operating in Blue Run Park except for the Marion County Shuttle until just recently, when Kayak Adventures showed up. There was another one that began operating in Blue Run Park, which was a Sunoco extension that some of you are familiar with. That was revoked, the license was revoked by Marion County. So they were basically, I was going to say kicked out. I was going to say kicked out. They were kicked out of Blue Run Park, and they were outlawed to operate. The Kayak Adventures, which has now been sold to this current vendor, that was operating out of Slompies. The city determined that that was an illegal operation, and the city revoked that permission too. So that was kicked out of Slompies too. So there has been an enforcement of the rules very long until now. All of a sudden, we now seem to have trouble enforcing the rules. We went into a great effort to enforce this, to develop this ordinance, which our attorney worked on. Now we seem to hear that we can't enforce it. That's a mystery to me, how we can't enforce an ordinance that we just broke. And for some reason, we can't have our police department enforce it. And I would remind everybody that the attorney is an advisory person. He can issue opinions. He's not a lying officer. He does not have authority to tell anybody to do anything. He can issue his opinion, which he has. But it's up to the police chief and council to decide how the rules are going to be enforced and what the policy of the city is going to be. So with that, just what is happening today?
Bill, you're going to have to start wrapping it up.
All right. What's happening now? What's happening now is we have tubes and tanks exiting the park at the Kayak Ranch. They're walking through the parking lot. They're walking through the park trails, and they're being picked up in San Jose Drive. These are paying customers. That is a commercial use, cut and dried. Whether they're walking through the park, or whether, just like a UPS truck, or anybody can walk through the park, that is a ridiculous argument. It is a commercial use period, and it should be enforced. And the police department should be directed to do that with the support of the council.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you. Ms. Odom?
Amber Serena.
Amber. Name and address.
Amber Serena, 11426 Southwest Hendrick Drive.
Speaking to the microphone.
I have a question for Mrs. Hanschar, if I may.
She will not be able to answer your question. You cannot ask direct questions to the council.
Okay, so it is, if I recall, she did vote for the ordinance of Blue Run Park. Okay. So I'm confused why the other evening she is against not enforcing it and why our city attorney would also not want to enforce our ordinance. I mean, if you're going to enact a new ordinance regarding the vacation rentals, I certainly need to follow that. need to follow that ordinance, or I would be fined, correct? I mean, so I'm curious when the city attorney's contract is up, because it's just been one thing after another, with bad advice, throwing people under the bus. And I think it's time for some new council members who are going to back the ordinances that they voted in. I mean, and here's a little fun fact about our beloved mayor, and I think very highly of him, and rally for him, and adore his family and children. He holds a master's degree. I don't know if y'all knew that. Very smart man. And did you know that master's degree is in special education? And that he was a teacher for special ed? And that most recently, he was defamed, his character? And that is a violation of the First Amendment, in my opinion. Maybe the attorney can let me know if that's correct or not. But I would be shocked if there wasn't a lawsuit on your desk here real soon, because that's going to affect his future if he ever wants to become a teacher again with these false accusations. So, in my opinion, Mr. Anderson should give a public apology, retract his statements, beg for Mr. White's forgiveness, and pray to God he doesn't have a lawsuit on his desk. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Sodan, next.
Paula Coopers.
Paula, you can speak to any subject one. It's not germane just to what we've been talking about.
Okay, I have in mind the subject to that. I've been noticing that, oh, my address, 11983 Palmetto Way, Dunellen, Florida. And I've been noticing that there are a lot of mental health issues in people that are surrounding me in the neighborhood, like they're doing drugs, stealing, other things, getting evicted, not paying their rent. And then yesterday, I had a knock on my door. It was a man in a wheelchair without a leg, and he said he wanted $3. And he was drunk. And I said, "I don't think I'll give you $3 because you will continue to drink and destroy your brain, because I hear you having trouble speaking now." And I felt a lot of compassion for him. He said, "I cut down that tree over there, and then I got in an accident and taking down a tree and lost my leg." So he had no brace on, and he was hungry, and so I went in and warmed up some food and gave it to him. And I said, "Can I take your picture? Because I want to take your case to the city council, because you deserve things that are not being addressed for the citizens of this city." And he said, "Oh, good," and he smiled. And I had a picture I gave him, I gave it to Melody. She put it on her computer. There it is. Ah, right there. It touched my heart so much that this man had nowhere to go. He actually asked me if he could sleep in my yard. And so I've been researching what's available in the community for social resources, and I got some very good information from Michelle, and she was very kind and loving about it. And so my interest is to get together this stuff about where you can go to help people and get it available to the citizens so that when we run into these people, we can know where to direct them. Now, I ran into another man who works here, and he said he would, he knew the man, and he would tell him where to go to get a prosthesis, because he's a skilled man, just losing his leg took out his whole life, and he didn't know how to adjust to it. So I'm interested in taking care of the mental and physical of our citizens, and emotional and spiritual, okay?
Thank you very much.
Sandra Marafino.
Ms. Marafino. Good to see you, Sandra. Name and address, please.
Sandra Marafino, 19544 Southwest 80th Second Place Road, Dunellen. As an aside before that, I have to thank Bill White. On January 7th, I was turning into two-year health, and I got back, somebody took his eyes off the road and smashed my car to pieces. So I'm standing there in a swimming suit in a bathroom to go swimming, and I get a hug from Bill White, because he happened on the property. So thank you, Bill. Only person I knew that did.
I just happened to be in the right place at the right time.
As many of you know, the movers and shakers behind Blue Run Park was my husband, Paul, and Bill Bieber, his best friend, along with help from RRC and many others, but they were the ones that spent many, many hours putting together the management plan, looking at sources for funding, basically spending hours on the phone cajoling people, learning about it, because they had learned that someone wanted to buy that property and put a hotel on it, which meant little or no public access for anybody. So, in the management plan originally, as somebody said, "The operation of any concession on the project site by a non-gumbril person or organization is under the disallowables." And that's clearly written in the original statement. My husband, Paul, worked as an electrical engineer on projects, starting with testing microcircuits on underground nuclear test sites, which is really interesting, carrying the radiation badges and coming out to see if it glows in the dark and so on. He developed microcircuitry. He developed semiconductors, all for government uses. And he's worked on the Chinese submarines, and he worked on many other projects, including next-gen weather systems. So he was a project manager and he was an engineer. During the last days of his life, I was with him and my two sons were with him. He said that everything he worked on, everything was outdated. Can you imagine, everything you've worked on in your life is no longer usable? And then he said to us, and I'll quote, he said, "He was most proud of his work to acquire, along with his close friend, Bill Bieber, and the help of Rainbow River Conservation and others, Blue Run of Dunellen Park, as that would be there forever." And we were in awe that he could tell us this. If he were here, he would be fighting hard to prevent the intrusion of concessions in the park that now draws people from everywhere. I was there one day, and I saw nine different state licensed places. It was amazing. So please, consider carefully the ordinance and protect this park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
That's a hard act.
And she stayed in the podium.
I'm going to try to stay here. Dave Porter, 11835 East Blue Cove Drive in Dunellen. So this is not immediate. Since the creation of Blue Run Park, we've had problems at K P Hole and people parking all along K P Hole Drive, and then they moved to Sitiki Village, and then we had people park in Dixie and overload the river. And then we had the Sunoco Station, they had the right to park all along Highway 41, and it just became such a dangerous issue. And our river is totally overcrowded, and it can't sustain that. It just can't. We see all over the world where people will exceed nature's capacity. So we've made a lot of effort, and this council should be commended on the work they've done on trying to limit the access to Blue Run Park so the safety of the people is not compromised. We've had photos after photos, talk from Marion County, did all kinds of stuff because it's a small park. It's right on the edge of a major highway, and it can't support that many people. It just can't. And so we thought we had it conquered with the ordinance. It was a great ordinance. We knew that we had to make some amendments probably, and this is one. So don't get caught up with the shiny little trinkets in the air with different issues. The issue is the safety of the people using Blue Run Park. So there'll always be little endarounds, and this endaround really makes the city look goofy. Think about all the people that come here and rent tubes, and they get out, and the other tubes are all stacked up, people waiting for a bus, but you're told you've got to go through the parking lot with a tube and dodge buses and cars, go through a trail, go over a fence, and we'll pick you up. They must think that the city's stupid. So I'd say that stay the course. You all voted on the ordinance. It protects our river, it protects the people, and then at the end of the season, we can see is there any other claims. But stay the course. Figure out what it takes to protect Blue Run Park from commercial use. Figure it out and make the changes. And I think that the people visiting here will be much safer. If not, then when they build the pedestrian bridge across the river, then people will be hauling tubes across that while bicycles are hitting them and they're dodging back and forth or going across 484 to some other spot.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Sodan?
Julian Mendelka.
Ms. Sodan?
Hi, Julian Mendelka, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. And I'm here to appeal to the city council to protect the Blue Run Park and the river from commercial exploitation. The ordinance was publicly discussed over and over with great transparency. The interventions, the intentions of the ordinance were always clear. The council, the staff, and the taxpayers invested a lot of time and money in making this happen, and the council, law enforcement, and our lawyer, Andrew Hand, all took part in developing it. So it's hard to believe that it would suddenly not be enforceable. High volumes of customers carrying rented equipment through narrow, woodsy trails doesn't really fit into the rules of a passive park. The ordinance expressly states no drop-off or pickup by liveries is permitted. So I really hope that the city council works through the barriers, along with the law enforcement, to resolve this right away. I'm happy to hear that there's already been discussions. Maybe the perimeter needs to be just the parking lot. You can carry your tube out of your car, out of the river to your car. The last thing I'll say that a couple, that I'll say, I guess, is that the disclaimer that the mayor made before public comment about how we should try to be respectful to one another, I think that the irony of that wasn't lost on anyone in this room. And I would hope that, just as you ask us to be respectful, that each and every council person is respectful to the people on the council, because trying to attack the character of the mayor, I think is just a useless diversion, as we really have issues that we need to attack, not the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sodan?
I don't have anyone on Zoom.
So is everyone who's signed up? Okay, everyone has signed up, we're on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that has not signed up? Tim?
Tim, why don't you always just sign up?
Tim Ineskeep, 12140 Maple Street here in Dunellen. Same issue, the Blue Run issue. It's unsafe practices is what's being targeted, not a particular business. It was the citizens and the residents that kept bringing up to the council, to the police, how unsafe the congestion was of Blue Run Park that prompted the ordinance. We voted for a proactive council members, not a council that waited until something tragic happens to react. If someone is blocking a lane on a public road below passengers and equipments, it's only a matter of time before a child darts out the wrong way, and it just doesn't get much horrible than that. I'm not anti-vendor. We've got some great quality vendors, vendors like John Sims and this Rainbow River Tour. But those that wanted to have blatant disregard and put the public safety at risk, I don't understand how they even have a license once this happens. And also come up and detain the mayor's reputation with, like what was done this last Wednesday, is this ludicrous. We're talking about public safety, and to use something as horrible as lewd, pitcher-type garbage, it doesn't belong here, doesn't belong here in any way, shape, or form. So we ask you, mayor, to keep vigilant as you have been. We appreciate the proactiveness that you've done. That's why we voted for you. Thank you very much.
I'm adopted.
Okay, we don't want to shut anybody out before we proceed. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes.
Chris Anderson, 11463 North Williams Street. There's a lot of information being spewed, a lot of misinformation. First off, we've never been an illegal operator. We've operated out of Blue Run Park for over 11 years prior to Bill White even being here.
Excuse me, sir. Don't mention that.
Mayor White, I'm sorry.
Speak to the council, sir.
Well, council.
Don't correct your, excuse me. Direct your comments to the council.
And there was another, there was another lady that mentioned something about very ambitious, nothing to do with the city limits, but that was a private group that had an authorization from a key holder there, and that we never pulled into the park, and that's a whole separate issue that got blown out of proportion. In order to enforce an ordinance, something has to be against the law. The ordinance was written, you guys didn't want us to pick up within the park, so I mean, what other option are you giving us, available option, being that's the only public available exit point? So here it is. We're not utilizing Blue Run Park. It's, KPL Shuttles utilizing the park, we have not been utilizing inside the park there. Anything outstated in last week, or council workshop, those comments, things that was brought up from customers, the experiences that they had with the mayor himself taking particular pictures, and I thought it was necessary to bring to the council's attention along with the rest of the general public. That's not me just claiming, just bringing some allegations out of thin air. That's multiple customers, in addition from one of our drivers, these interactions that they had with the mayor, and they all thought it was very unprofessional and unethical the way that that matter was handled, in addition to claiming it was official city business. And also, Blue Run Park, yeah, it was an alternative development. We never compromised safety. It's always been our number one thing. Anytime we've picked up anybody, no matter where it's been, in town, we always make sure, safety first. We're not impeding traffic, we're not doing any of that. At the end of the day, we're failing to realize that these people have constitutional rights, and one of the, one of the things we need to be aware of is not to infringe on the First Amendment for expressive activities. If somebody must have walked in and out of that park with a hula hoop on their head, a tube on their head, they have every right to do so. I mean, who are we to say who could walk in and out of that park with a tube on their head? Or however. It's just, this whole thing, if we could have worked together from day one, we wouldn't be sitting here wasting everybody's time and taxpayers' money on something going round and round. I mean, we came to you originally with an agreement, but obviously, everything's fallen on deaf ears, and we've tried to do what we can do. So if you have an alternative option, I'm open for all ears. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I would just like to say something to Mr. Anderson. Appreciate today's approach, which is much more professional and to the point and could be productive. What you did the other night was inexcusable. It was below the belt, low class, and you actually embarrassed yourself.
It was below the belt, low class, and you actually embarrassed yourself more than you embarrassed me. And sir, I'm saying to you directly, I am a public official and I accept the responsibility. As a public official, I am open to criticism. It goes with the job. But I'm not open to slander and libel. I'm telling you, be careful. If you slander and libel me again in public, in a malicious way, we won't just be having this conversation. I will respond to it to protect my reputation. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mary Ann.
Hold that microphone down so we can hear you.
My name's Mary Ann Hilton. I live 12078 Palmetto Fourth, Danielle, Florida, which is right next door to our, to the area that is in the city. We have an absolutely marvelous group of people now working very hard to keep this city, to keep this city the way it should be run. And I am very proud and I feel very privileged to be friends with many of these folks. And I will tell you that I have never seen a better group of people work harder or work better together than what I have seen in the people that are now here. And I appreciate your skills, I appreciate your honesty, I appreciate the fact that when something goes wrong, you've got the guts, I still pardon the word, to take it on and win it over. And I am very proud of you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, please be noted that everyone has wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, has had that opportunity. It is now, what time is it?
6:27.
6:27, okay. We now move to the consent agenda. With the consent agenda, I always kind of go over this because I know you guys are not all aware of what that means. What this means is the next seven items are going to be voted on by council at one time. These are things we've already talked about, we have a consensus on, it's already finished business. So before we bring it in front of the council for a vote, on the consent agenda, this is your opportunity. Ms. Odom, has anybody signed up to make comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir. There were multiple people that signed both sheets. So on specific agenda items, I have three people signed up that spoke during the last round of public comments, and that would be David Rollerson, Amber Serena, and Bill River were signed up on both sheets. So I'm not sure if they wanted to speak to a separate agenda item or not.
Okay. This would be separate. Anybody want to speak to the agenda, the consent agenda? Please make it noted, no one, everyone has had their opportunity to speak, no one has wanted to speak. So I turn it over to council. Do we have a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
I'd move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
We have a second? Second by Ms. Williams. Any further discussion? I'm sure there's not. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? None? It does pass. So with that, if you're following us on the agenda, we are now through seven, and we are now at item number eight on the agenda. And we have the pleasure of having Mr. Art Jones, who's going to give us a presentation. Welcome, Art.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163 Palmetto Way here in Dan Allen. Yeah, I'm just here to talk about One Rake at a Time again and, and bring you up to speed with what's going on. I'm very excited, we've got our website up and running, and I would encourage everybody on the council to take the time and please look at that website. We've done a lot of work on it and we're doing our very best to make it crystal clear what we're trying to do here. And it's onerakeatatime.org. Very simple. What we've done on that website...
Is it O-N-E or one?
O-N-E.
Sorry.
That's all right. O-N-E, onerakeatatime.org. And I've got some cards on me now, we've finally got business cards printed up. So what we've done on that website is there's, there's a section that says the science. And we've gone through every single scientific evaluation of the Rainbow River that's been done by the government and by the Springs Council. So it's all on there, so you can look at it and see what they're talking about. And the common theme of what they're talking about is the river is in decline. The river was invaded by hydrilla 30, 35 years ago. And hydrilla is a real problem. Hydrilla is the kind of plant that by itself, an aquarium is very innocuous, doesn't hurt anything, but in the river, it wants to take over and suffocate what we have here. You know, we love the Rainbow River, we hate to see it slowly dying. If, if left unchecked, the hydrilla will choke the river to death. The state has no choice but to spray the hydrilla because it's just taking over. So hydrilla spreads in four different ways. If you break off a little piece of hydrilla, it will root out. If you pull it out and there's a little piece of root, that will also root again. If you don't get all the roots, there's little hard white seeds that are down in the sand that can stay dormant for like a year, and when they get the chance, they start growing. And then the worst thing that hydrilla does is in the little tiny, they're called flowers at the end of the hydrilla, there are actually hundreds of little tiny, tiny seeds that you can't see. What I've noticed is I've had the, my area in front of my house, all nice and clean, and then, you know, go away on vacation a little bit, come back, and it looked like somebody carpet bombed it with hydrilla. It's everywhere because the seeds just, they just grab wherever they can. And hydrilla can grow in silt. So it, you know, as, as the state's been spraying it, there's more silt, the hydrilla doesn't really care, that generation died, now the next generation is using that silt as nutrition to grow on, and it's, it's hurting the eelgrass beds. Every year, there's less eelgrass and more hydrilla. We don't want to see what happened to Crystal River and the Homeless Assa River happen to the Rainbow River. Crystal River was basically almost declared dead. It was invaded by hydrilla. They sprayed and sprayed and sprayed it. And, and then what happened next? They always say that, you know, nature abhors a vacuum, in came lymbia. Lymbia hordes nutrients. So it took all those legacy nutrients, all that muck and silt, and it started creating this horrible algae that was just choking the bay to death. And when I started that One Rake at a Time project in Crystal River, a lot of people had given it up. A lot of people said, "It's just going to come right back, you know, you're not going to do any good, you know, I would help if I thought it would do good. You know, Art, you should have been here two years ago." And I'm thinking, "Oh, come on, no, we can clean this up." And then the other thing I heard was, "Yeah, somebody really does need to do something." So I decided, you know what, I can do a little bit, and then as I was doing a little bit, at least it's a little bit better than it was yesterday, and it grew. And I think most of you know the history of it. We had hundreds of volunteers come out and we got money coming in and, and we created videos and we were determined to save Crystal River in Kings Bay. And it started working, and we got the attention of Tallahassee. And when it got up to Tallahassee and they saw us out there with our rakes, a couple of the people up in the legislature said, "You know what, we need to get Art Jones a bigger rake." And what that meant by that was, "Let's get him some dredging, let's get him some powerful equipment down there, let's get him some money and do this." And I couldn't be more grateful. Tallahassee has come on board and, you know, was so grateful that they had faith in what we're doing. I think what really swayed them that was the entire community getting together. And that's what we need to do here in the Rainbow River. We need to get everybody working on the same page. The enemy is hydrilla. It's, it's just bad stuff. And we need to remove the hydrilla, get the silt off the bottom, and replant eelgrass. We have now proven on the Kings Bay project, and that's also on the website, you'll see a link right to the Kings Bay project, right, right to the Homeless Assa River project. Go in there and look at the numbers. It's, it's all been documented and proven. It works. Eelgrass, when given a chance, will put its roots down deep into the soil. The broad leaves of the eelgrass will shade out the hydrilla. So now all these little seeds and these little pieces of hydrilla that are trying to grow, they can't get the sunlight. The eelgrass will become dominant again in sections right now where hydrilla is dominated. So that's what I want to do here. I mean, really, you know, it's exciting to get it done, and I'm excited to do it now because I'm not getting any younger, you know, every year the river's getting a little dirty, let's get it before it dies. And right now, the legislator, legislative people up in Tallahassee are very supportive. They dedicated another $15 billion towards Springs funding, and it's a good time to get up there and talk to them and have a shovel-ready program ready to go. In other words, we need to do all the research to make sure we know exactly what we're going to do, how much we're going to be taking out, where, totally, you know, fill out those Army Corps of Engineering permits, the DEP permits, working with them. I talked to Jeff Sorge, he's like, "Yes, do it." You know, they're going to be totally involved. And get everybody working together and let's get the next phase going so we have a shovel-ready product, project to take up to Tallahassee and ask them to please help us. And by asking them, they're going to say, "Well, you know, we see that you're enthusiastic, the town is, is with you, then we've got a good chance of getting it." And so that's what I'm trying to do here. Like I say, the website, it's still a work in progress, but we've got a lot up there, so please go look at it. We're going to get some more videos up there and stuff, and it's working. So, so I just wanted to talk to the council about it again, saying, you know, in the future, like, you know, either resolution of support, possibly financial support, whatever you can do to get everybody working together and show Tallahassee that this community really wants to save the Rainbow River. Not just for ourselves, but for the otters, for the wildlife, for the fishing. Because hydrilla, it doesn't really matter, one other thing I want to say is, once, somebody told me, they said, "Well, why don't you stop all the nitrates from coming out of the spring vents first? Shouldn't that what you should do, stop the pollution coming in?" And I thought, "Well, not really because, you know, people aren't going to stop farming and, and, you know, stop living in their homes with septic systems." So regardless of what the nitrates counts are coming out of the springs, we can still heal the river. We can get that hydrilla out and get that eelgrass growing again. So I'm absolutely hopeful and I'm determined to, to get it done. I'm as determined on this Rainbow River as I was in Crystal River. And I'm so, I also want to be, say, I'm so grateful to all the people that have already come forward and offered me support, offered me financial donations, and said, "Art, we're with you, do not give up. We need, we need this to happen here."
The gentleman that you spoke with, for guys at the state...
Jeff Sorge.
That, that's who Mrs. Cabbage had spoken about, correct?
Correct.
Just making sure.
Yeah, I made sure after she, she said, "Do I need to talk to him?" I went and talked to him, he goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think that's great, we've talked about this before. You move forward and don't, and trust me, as you get those permits starting to fill out, he's there. He's going to be working with us to make sure we get it done right."
I was just making sure that you...
Yeah, absolutely.
I have to promise her she says thank you.
Yes. Yeah, and, and a couple of things just to also say on, on some of Jan's comments, when we do dredging, it's not going to stink. It's all underwater dredging. It comes up, it's processed, it goes in back, it's not going to stink. She's not going to smell like rotten eggs she was carrying on about. We're not going to have plumes of silt going down the river. We do diver vacuuming, and you can look on the website and you'll see video of people cleaning it. You'll see there's no, there's no plumes of silt going down the river. We wouldn't, that wouldn't be acceptable to the DEP, we wouldn't get a permit for that. So we're going to be very careful about it and do it in the very best possible way we can.
Thanks, sir.
Good. Any other questions from the council?
Any other questions for all we have?
I'd like to forward to your website.
Thank you. Yeah, it's up and running, so when you hit the tone, get on there.
Thank you for the information, it's making me Google.
Good.
I'm just trying to make sure. The danger of all this stuff.
Especially look, look at that Kings Bay Restoration Project.
I'm not a person that picks one, so.
Just amazing, yeah.
But I will look at what?
Yeah, when you get on the website, make sure you look at the Kings Bay Restoration Project, that we've got a link there. And that, that's my baby. That is my baby. I, I started that, that's my baby, and Homeless Assa River too. We started cleaning that one rake at a time with a rotary, and that's my, my second baby. This is my third.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. So why don't you just put that on our live workshop and council can kind of just discuss what we might want to do with us?
Okay.
Okay, we're moving to item number, is that nine?
Yes.
Now, who on council, who on council is supposed to give this one?
Me.
Okay.
Take your glasses off.
Do I have to give my name and address? Hello, everybody. Welcome, I'm glad you're here. I'm going to give a little presentation on pretty much a 60-day report. The, the Blue Run Park ordinance went into effect April 1st, and it's been a little over 60 days. So like I said, we kind of gave it a 60-day test ride to see how it's working, and then to take a look at it and see how it's working, what's good and what's bad. What I'm going to focus on are some of the safety issues that have now been created because of the ordinance. I want to give you a little background on how I actually got on council. I moved to Dan Allen in 2017, and I live on a road that's right on 484, Palmetto Way, right across from Swampies. And I noticed when I was trying to pull out of my road that there was on-street parking so close to the Palmetto Way that you actually couldn't see the traffic going back and forth on 484. You almost had to start sticking your nose into the tra, into the traffic because you could not see because there was a big truck right next to you. And I said, "Wow, people are going 35 miles an hour and I'm actually, I can't get on the road safely." So at that time, I went up to the chief and I said, "Chief, is there anything you can do?" He says, "Not, I can't do anything about it, it's a county problem, but you might start with the council." So I came to council and introduced myself. They didn't know who I was, I didn't know who they were, didn't know even where this building was when I found out. So I came in here and I pled my case to the council. I said, "I'm a new resident and this is my issue." The council listened attentively and said, "Thank you very much, Mr. White, we appreciate your information." Two months went by, and as we were getting more into the summer, it became more problematic for me to get on 484. So I said, "Let me go visit the council again." So I came again to the council, and I told them about the issue. I said, "Someone's going to get hurt." Again, the council said, "Thank you, Mr. White, we appreciate it. We'll see what we can do." Nothing happens. So now I take a video of it, an actual video of me sitting trying to get onto that road, and you can just see how it is. I bring the video in and show the council. Nothing still happens. So then, a month or two later, when I'm just sitting here, now I'm starting to get into, I said, "I think I might need to get into this, you know, I'm not quite seeing what's going on here is really maybe working." I was at a council meeting, I was sitting there, and the chief gave his report and said, "We had a terrible accident on 484. Someone got T-boned and three people that were in a vehicle were sent to the hospital." And he says, "The reason they said for the T-bone, they said they could not see because of on-street parking." So what I'm going to report to you right now is what is clearly ongoing, that is clearly an accident waiting to happen. I don't want again be someone who shows a clear and present danger and the city does not do anything about it until somebody actually gets hurt. It's just not the way you do it. It's just not the way you do business. So what I'm gonna do is show you a series of photographs that I used to show what was going on, that I shared these photographs with chief because he is our enforcement officer. I also shared the photographs with our attorney, and I shared the photographs with the city with descriptions of what I was doing, why I was doing it, and what I was trying to show. In the meantime, it appears that some individuals that saw me taking the photographs did not appreciate me taking photographs. And I can truly say, I can understand that. A lot of people don't want the picture taken. But nothing was taken, inappropriate. Every photograph that I took is on public record. Anybody can ask to see those photographs, and I challenge anybody to look at any photograph I took that anybody, any reasonable person would think that is objectionable. So what I've done, knowing that, um, people might not appreciate being photographed, when I show the pictures I'm gonna show you, we have inked out their face. So we will at least keep their privacy. So, Ms. Oden, if we can start off, and I pray we have this in order, because if we don't have it in order, I'm sunk. Okay, how did I get involved with this? Go ahead, turn the lights up. This is actually the entrance to the auxiliary lot. I was notified that there was a lot of erosion going on in the auxiliary lot. So I went over there and took a look at it myself. As a mayor or a councilperson, that's our job in between meetings, to go out and search and look for things that need to be addressed. That is what we do. And then when we come back here, we discuss it to ourselves. We cannot talk to each other outside of these meetings. So all we can do is be the fact-finders in between meetings and come back and talk on this basis and share with each other what we know. So it's almost part of your responsibility to go out in the public and look. So right here, Mandy, go to the next one. I'm just gonna show some pictures. There, there's a picture there where there's so much erosion that the pavement is separating, and actually, every time a car goes over that, it breaks off more. Okay, Ms... There again is another picture of the terrible erosion that's from the entrance to the park actually going into the park. There's another one that shows some erosion, and the sort of, I think the last one, I believe?
Yes, in this one.
Okay. So now, I say to Troy, "What are we gonna do about this?" And there's a question, who's responsible? Is it the county that's responsible? Is it the city that's responsible? Made a few phone calls, and lo and behold, what does Troy do? By the way, when Troy opens up a shirt, there's an S here. So what does Troy do? Well, we're just trying to figure out who's responsible. Troy goes out there and fixes it. Yeah, the next. So right here, there's a picture of it being smoothed out. Mandy? There, you saw that other picture where the asphalt was separated, smoothed out? He did this within forty-eight hours. You can see it. He actually brought in gravel to try to divert the water into the woods. There, you can see another picture of how nice and smooth it was compared to where it was. That's one more picture. Is that it? Okay. So now I've gone out there, and I've seen the problem. I've talked to Troy. Troy has jumped on it. It's fixed. I've looked at it. Now I'm gonna go out there a couple days later, and I'm gonna take a look at it, see how it's holding up. Very interested, you know, in my brain. Cars are coming and out. So I go back out there a couple days later to look at it, and I see that park there. That van and the trailer is parked right near the entrance. The entrance that I was showing you is somewhere right in here. So I looked at it, and I says, "Wow." Okay, go to the next one. Mandy? I look at that, parked right there. It's got its doors open. It's got tubes in it, so that since the tubes are in it, it means people are in it. So by the doors being open and it's sitting there, it looks like it's waiting for more people to come that might be coming down, watching this. I was unaware of this, but I have found it because I'm investigating the construction of the road. And Mandy, I think we have one more. And there, there it is, fully loaded. So you can see, for every tube, there's a person. So for every tube you see there, you can surmise that there's that many people in the van. So Mandy, where do we go to next? Go to the next one. So the van pulls away, and I wanna say, "Well, let's take a look at it, and let's see what kind of damage the van is doing to the grassy area where it's the entrance." So right there, you can see where that is. This has been going on apparently since August first, or somewhere around. City was not aware of it. I certainly wasn't aware. By the way, my mom lives in Dunellen Heights, and I go over there every day to visit her. So I do go by this because I'm visiting my mother. So it's not something like I just sit there camping, waiting for something to happen. I have a reason to go by here. So go to the next one, Mandy. These will be, there's some damage. Go to the next one. You can see where Troy has fixed that, and that van that's parked there has to go right over here and go right over here, and again, start busting that concrete. Okay, Mandy? Just one more picture. This is what, the last picture in this sequence. Some people say that there's no traffic on San Jose, so don't worry about it. Well, there we go. There, there's three cars coming right here. And what I want you to see is, right when my thumb's half-blocking it out, that's a speed limit sign. But you notice there's no other sign there. It's just one sign. Bingo. I get ahold of the chief. I show him the pictures. I show him the problem, and within twenty-four hours, the chief has instructed Troy to put the no parking sign there. Problem solved, right? It's over with. No more problem. Show us one more. I think we have one more. So we even, Troy even puts a cone there, so there's no way someone can say, "I didn't see the sign." Okay, we feeling pretty good about it. We got it done. Okay, go to the next one. Well, I go back over there and see how it's going, and I notice people are standing there at the entrance of the park, the auxiliary. Notice the tubes that are actually stacked inside the park. They're being stacked inside the park, waiting to be picked up by a commercial vendor. So the people are standing here. These must be the photos that caused people to have some discomfort because these are only, the only photos I took. People, everything else was. So if anybody can see, in fact, I came up and identified myself to them. I says, "I am here. My name is Bill White. I'm the mayor, and I would like to take a picture of this sign that is clearly saying there is no commercial activity in this park." So most of them turned their back, which is fine, and I took my picture. Okay, go to the next one. Now, they are now, the van has pulled up. They were waiting. The van has pulled up, and now they are starting to leave where they were standing and starting to walk. Here's what they do. The van is parked there on the shoulder of San Jose as the people now are walking out of the park toward the van. Okay, Mandy? There they are, walking with, carrying tubes. You can see this, uh, this is a girl. She looks like she's about ten, twelve years old. She's carrying two. Now, she's walking into a road carrying those that has traffic going back and forth. With the van right here, which means cars that are coming and going have to deal with that van. So they are walking directly into the street. Okay. There they are. They have walked across the street. They are loading their tubes on the van as the van is clearly partially on the shoulder and partially on the road, impeding traffic. Key point was, the people were waiting for the van. You'll find out where waiting is an important part. Go to the next one, please. So now we think, I get ahold of chief, and I say, "Chief, the only thing that's changed now, they're parking on the other side of the street, tearing up the grass over there." So what does chief do? He says, "Thank you for the photos. I appreciate it, Mayor." So he sends Troy out there, and now we're putting barrier signs to prevent it. So the vendor saw where the no parking, and then says, "Well, I'm a parker. I'll just find another place." So now the city has to go through the trouble of putting the barrier. Please, continue. You can see there's a barrier, I think a barrier, well, let's see where is a barrier. I don't know if that's a barrier. My eyes are getting, is it? Okay, let's go to the next one. And to even demonstrate it, so there can be no dispute by the vendor that I don't know where the barrier starts and stops, we actually have to go to trouble to get a spray ca, spray paint can and spray a line on the grass. I mean, like, the city doesn't have enough to do, right? Okay, go to the next one. There's another one with a barrier. Go to the next one.
That's all of this.
All right. So we got case, we got it solved, right? It's solved. We got the no parking sign there. You can't park. Now on the shoulders, we have the barriers. Okay. The safety issue has been resolved. Well, let's go. Whoa. Well, you look at this, and now the van is not on the side of the road, but it's actually parked in the intersection on a road leading into Dunellen Heights, which is clearly a violation blocking an intersection parking. As you can see, there is the van, and there are the green tubes. That is how you leave the park. They go right up there. So they were told with the no parking sign, they couldn't park where they were parked. They were told by the barriers, they couldn't park there. So they're not quite getting it, you know? Like, you're really not supposed to be doing this? So now they park here. Show us another one, Mandy. There's a little bit more of a close-up. Another one? That it? Okay. Chief then, shown these pictures, along with the attorney and staff. Chief gets ahold of the owners of this vendor. It says, "You can't do this. You're parking in an intersection. You can't do it." Problem solved, right? It's all over. We got it. All right. Chief, good job. I'm glad you had the time to do this stuff, right on. Okay, let's go to the next. Whoa. Well, what is this? Well, now, we're sitting not on the shoulder, we're actually in the road. Go ahead, another. So this is me, this was actually a video. I have this on video. But I couldn't get the video to send, so I chopped this into pictures. Now, you can see right here, this is an important point. This shuttle is sitting here, waiting for customers. It's not temporarily sitting there, loading and unloading quickly. It's actually sitting there in the middle of the road, blocking this traffic. If you see, here's a car coming this way, and I'm coming this way. So if we're trying to just, like, someone has to stop while someone goes around. There it is. That's a close one. And there, there it is, right there. This is me driving, so I actually have to leave my lane, and I have to go around here. If I don't notice that there's a stopped vehicle in front of me, it could be easily a tail-end collision, along with the pedestrians loading and stuff. You want more? I don't know if there is any.
That's the last one.
Okay, that's it. So what I wanna do is compliment staff, Andrew Hand, the chief, Troy, that we are actively working on this, or doing what we can. And we are now having to, now, talk about putting additional rules in the park that you can't take tubes out of a certain area because of what this vendor's doing. So I'm saying to you, as the mayor, it would be irresponsible for me, totally irresponsible for me, to know this is ongoing and not do my duty as a mayor to show we have a clear and present danger out here that someone's gonna get hurt, as I opened my discussion with, which happened with the T-bone. If we don't address this, whether it's in the short term or the long term, somebody is gonna get hurt there, no question. You got kids walking across the road with tubes and whatever. So I wanna compliment everybody. We are gonna work on this. We will solve it. This is the first time council has heard this presentation because of the Sunshine Law. They, I can't call them and tell them, so they're actually hearing it for the first time, as you are. I hope you enjoyed my presentation. Okay, you're all discussed. Okay, everybody, we're getting now to the business. We're at item number ten, Agreement Twenty, Twenty-two dash twenty-three, the cloud permit software. You can accept public comment if anybody has anything on that. Who is gonna give description of a person and then get public comment? If anyone wants to comment, and then a description, and then a public wants to speak. If anybody is wanting to leave after hearing these presentations, if you wanna leave, please do it now, and we can let everybody leave, so we all got to leave. All right, let's, let's just take a five-minute break, okay? Take a five-minute break. Okay, we're gonna call the speaking. Back in order, we, for the record, we took about a ten-minute recess. It is now seven twenty. Seven ten. We're at, we're at Agenda Item Number Ten, Agreement Twenty, Twenty-two dash twenty-three, the cloud permit software. And Georgina, you're gonna give us a description, and then we'll let public comment if they want to comment.
Yes, the mayor's request and your approval for a software permit, planning, zoning, and code enforcement software that is going to allow our department to go online. And so any contractors or residents that come with a permit request can do it online. It will be a lot easier than the way it is set right now. It's going to allow contractors to pay online. It's going to allow our staff to have more time to do other things that they need to do, such as code revisions. So it's, it's an overall, it's a great program. There are many cities around Florida that are using it. And the company that we chose, I verified their references. One of their references I verified was the San Luis County School Board, and they are very happy. They are planning to go live in about a week. And other two references that have it already in place, and they're working with them, and they said that they... and they said that they were phenomenal. So I asked that you approve this. The agreement, the way it's stipulated right now is five years as the term, and I've talked to them to reduce it to three years instead. So I think that's going to be more doable for everybody. And they will be submitting that agreement for your approval if you choose to approve it.
Basically, for the public, this is to upgrade our software and get away from the handwritten stuff and just get us kind of up to speed, right?
Yes, and at the same time, it will... you'll have... what you're paying is what you get. You don't have anything else attached to it. Like, for example, the software we use now, the program we use now, if we were to go get training or whatever else we need, it's in addition to what we pay. This will be that and nothing else. It's all inclusive. It's all inclusive, yes.
Okay, so before council discusses and makes her motion, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to Agenda Item Number 10? Yes, Tim?
Tim Henske, 12140 Maple Street. I remember that. I'm all for the technology and everything. I mean, like, they have come from the nuclear industry where, you know, it's all about technology and ways to do better and blah, blah, blah. But over the course of many decades, you know, have had different programs that initially looked good, and then once we got into them, it was like, "Oh, my gosh, it doesn't do everything." So what... well, my question is, is there a trial period that can be done, like many software companies will argue to do for 30, 60, 90 days, whatever, before we spend the amount of money that we're going to spend on this program to ensure that it does suit our needs? I can't take credit for this one. It's actually from Louise Winstock Knight. Is this program compatible with our business with Marion County?
So, Tim, what we'll do this is we keep those questions in mind, and then when we have our discussion, we'll ask that those questions be answered.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Yes, this is... Brenda DiRago, 11661, Kent Drive. Since I can't ask a question, I would ask that the council address on the software because they get out... the software gets outdated so quickly. Will that be all-inclusive continuous updates in software? Thank you.
Okay, so you're leaving us with a question, correct? Georgina, I hope you're writing down questions because it's coming your way. Would anybody else like to make comment? Okay. What we have is we need a motion and a second, and then we can have a discussion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to...
Approve.
Yeah? We have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Now it's open for discussion. Georgina, why don't you start off by answering those questions, Sebastian Cannon, and then council will discuss.
Yes, absolutely. Well, the program includes updates, so as the program goes, it's going to include all those upgrades. As we get the implementation set up, we tell them what we want in that program, and they are going to accommodate to what we need. Each city's different, so all the cities have different issues that they deal with on a daily basis, but they work with us on the different issues. And this is a conversation I had with one of the cities that I spoke to, and they, you know, they had to go through the implementation process. They wanted to focus on certain specific sections of their code and their permitting process, and so they went through that whole implementation to be able to get what they wanted, and they were able to achieve what they needed. So they are very flexible in that, and they're willing to work with us to accommodate whatever it is that we need. We are... I haven't checked with Marion County, but I have checked with other cities around Florida and have verified their references with them for that purpose, to make sure that they are valuable.
Okay. Repeat for the public record the expected cost per year?
The expected cost is going to be for the first year, $6,000.
Six?
$6,000. It's $1,000 for implementation fee and $5,000 for the annual fee, and then it's going to be $5,000 thereafter every year.
So are we locked into a contract for a long period of time, or...
Three years.
Three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a three-year commitment? Okay.
And to answer Tim's question about the trial period, isn't there a 90-day period where we can get out of the contract without any repercussion? Wasn't there a 90-day clause in there somewhere?
No, that was a clause that I wrote in allowing the city to terminate into the actual agreement, but the company didn't accept that request for a change. That's what prompted, as I understand it, the request for a shorter term length from five years to three years.
Okay. And just to add to that, I did speak with the other cities that I referred to for references, and I asked them, "What did you think about this clause?", and they didn't have a problem with that.
Okay, council... Ms. Kenny, do you have any comments?
Well, I certainly can understand community development needing software, updating software, and it seems reasonable, and I would be in favor.
Ms. Williams?
And being a former employee of a business, whatever makes the job easier for you, I'm for it.
Right, sir?
And as far as for, I mean, we're coming into the other counties. I mean, Marion County does that. Everybody can go online, do the permits, order their inspections and those types of things, so, you know. And with the other one, that was ridiculously overpriced, and it wasn't user-friendly. So this one's user-friendly, that's, and cost-effective, that's the main... cost-effective, but user-friendly. You don't want cheap, you want it cost-effective. Good job on getting all of the examples for us.
Thank you.
It all sounds sound to me, Georgina. I have confidence you have totally checked it out because you're the one that's going to have to work with it. Yeah. So any further discussion?
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion is over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We go to number 11 now. AGR 2022-15, Azovar Audit Services. Is this... Give us a brief description, Jen, and we'll open it to public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Azovar's a national company that basically audits tax revenues on behalf of cities and counties, and there is no charge for their services to the city. The only fees that we would be required to remit to them would be if they recover revenue that we weren't aware of, they would receive 45% of that new revenue to us over a 36-month period. Or if they recommend an efficiency or a process that the city wishes to implement, they would receive a portion of those revenues that would be collected as well over a three-year period. So we're hoping that they do find some unreported revenues, such as addresses that are being remitted to, say, the county or Marion County or Citrus County that actually should be coming to this directly to the city of Dunellen. That does happen more frequently, I think, if people do realize, because you rely on, say, your cable company or your cell company to report the correct address to the state. And with Dunellen's greater service area and everybody using Dunellen as an address, things can get messed up. Now, I was also asked to check out their references, and I was actually given 12 contacts. Four were able to respond quickly to me, and all four have spoken highly, excuse me, of Azovar. One city, they audited over a three-year period that resulted in revenue recovery that... they negotiated a settlement, so I can only assume that the missing revenue, the unreported revenue, was very large over a three-year period for them to settle. I could be wrong, but I'm not sure why else they'd enter into a settlement agreement. Another city said that even though they didn't find too many unreported revenues, it gave them a level of confidence that they were collecting everything that was due. And each of these four references said they would hire them in the future. So that's just a brief overview. Again, there is no cost to the city unless they find unreported revenue, and basically it's a win-win if they do find some.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Smith? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment to Agenda Item Number... it's 11.
It's 11.
See, no one even... you guys aren't paying attention usually.
I was thinking, I was saying, well, Ms. DiRago doesn't say anything, that must be okay.
In fact, I did that on purpose just to see if you were awake.
I wasn't paying attention.
Now, number 11. Any comments on number 11? Okay, please make note that public has had a chance to make its comment. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I raise the mayor's be-op-press assigned agreement, ARG 2020-15, with Azovar Audit Services.
Second?
Second.
Got a second. Any additional discussion? No discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we're at number 12. First reading ordinance, 2022-06, Purchase of Goods Charter Referendum. Who gives us a description of that?
Mandy. I've got Jan. Either me or Jan. Just in summary, as we've put together on the Agenda Summary Form that Jan did here for me back in February, you guys made amendment to the purchasing policy in the code, raising the threshold for public improvements for sealed bids from $15,000 to $35,000. That was ordinance 2022-03. During that discussion, there was also some discussion about amending the charter to be more consistent with that, with the code, as far as purchasing of goods. So this would be a charter amendment. It'd be a referendum on the ballot in November that would increase the threshold in the charter for the purchase of goods. Over $5,000, we would have to get at least two quotes, as long as it was less than 35. If it was over 35, we would have to go to bid. Still, those two quotes would not be staff's decision. Those two quotes would have to be brought to council for approval. So what this ordinance says is it just puts this on the ballot for a vote by the public.
So this would be on the November ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be first reading at this meeting, then you'll have second reading in July, and then we would get it over to the supervisor of elections to be included on the ballot.
Very good. Do we have any public comment? No public comment? Can we have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-06 to be read by title only?
So moved.
Got a second?
I'm second.
I think we go straight to a vote. Is that true, Ms. Odom? We don't have a discussion at this point?
This is just a motion for me to read it by title.
Okay. Is there a vote on this? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, Ms. Odom?
Ordinance Number ORD 2022-06, An Ordinance of the City of Dunellen, Florida, Submitting to the Electors of Dunellen a Proposed Amendment to Section 5 of the City Charter, Amending Purchase Requirements for Goods, Providing the Ballot Title, Summary and Text for the Proposed Amendment, Providing Directions to the City Clerk, Providing for the Effective Date of the Charter Amendment if Approved by a Majority of Electors, Providing for Severability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date for this ordinance.
Very good.
I move ordinance ORD 2022-06 to be approved.
Got a second?
I'm second.
Any discussion?
Just a little bit.
Yes.
Can we have... can we direct staff, if this goes first and second reading or whatever, to go ahead and start trying to figure out an education form, you know, an educational plan to get this out there to the public, not just those who attend our meetings or listen in? But I think that'll be something that'll be important. Maybe like on our Facebook page?
Yes, yes, the website, Facebook page.
And even, I don't know if we can even do like a mailing with FGUA?
We can look into that.
Or even like a little open house or just something that we can definitely get, you know, like maybe to the organizations, even the churches or something, just to get it out there to as many people as we can and get a education platform going that's not just about, "What is this?"
Right. Yes, we definitely will work on that.
So they understand what they're voting on.
Right. That's good. And you would even take public comment on this before you vote.
Okay. Okay, on this one also. Okay, we're getting ready to vote. Is there any public comment before the vote? Okay, no public comment. Go back to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we move, I believe, to Item Number 13. It's a discussion of the asphalt acre. We'll move on to arc overflow parking. I've also kind of touched on it, and Troy's going to take off with it. Troy, it's all yours.
All right. Counsel, the workshop I explained to you, I was going out for a couple bids or quotes on redesigning the entrance to the park. As you've seen in the photos, it's lime rock right now, but I anticipate on doing is putting an asphalt driveway leading into the park, 20 feet wide, 50 feet long, and recutting the ditch line where we've seen the on-street parking taking place to ensure that the water is directed to the storm drains as it should. I did receive my second quote this afternoon at about 4:00. So I've got two quotes here. The first quote that I'm recommending we go with is from Rock and Roll Babing. They're the same company that does our grading out in that neighborhood. It can do the scope of work and the upgrades that we requested for $8,500. That includes labor, grading of the swale, eight inches of lime rock, full compaction with an inch and a quarter asphalt leading into the driveway area, and recycling any material taken from the ditch area and putting it into the parking lot itself to help build that elevation up. The second quote came in from Ranger Construction, $34,077.56.
$34,000?
Yes, ma'am. So my recommendation is we go with the first quote.
Kind of like a no-brainer, isn't it?
Yes. So to be fair to Ranger Construction, I did reach out to them at 4:15 after opening the email and catching my breath, found out why their quote is so high. It's because the size of their equipment, the size of their company, they don't mess around. They come in with about 10 or 15 people, low-boy equipment, and whether it takes all day or a half a day or 10 days, they come ready to get a lot of work done. So their mobilization fee alone was $12,000 because of that. So I have to respectfully understand that they don't take on super-small jobs like this, so... Well, I'm asking council to approve this project at $8,500 and allowing me a little bit of contingency on that in case we run into something. Say 10 even. We do have that in the budget under CRA. We've been for $10,000 capital improvements at Ernie Mills Park, which we have not begun on. That was for, I think we used a little bit to redo the bathrooms, but we ended up doing that way under budget and only using operating funds, not capital funds. So we do have the money in CRA this year, this budget, to accomplish this. And the contractor said he can have it completed within four to six weeks, weather providing, and his other contracts that he's finishing up now.
Very good. Ms. Odom, are you finished?
Yes.
Ms. Odom, the question I have, this is labeled as a discussion, the discussion doesn't normally also allow a vote, so it's just discussion only?
You can make a vote, if you accept public comment, you can vote on Troy's request. It's a walk-on, basically.
Okay, this has been pretty much, council's pretty much aware of this, we've already seen the photos, you all have seen the photos, which was the area that I started my presentation on, and that is to, that will always in the rainy season continue to wash out, although we're trying to keep that parking lot natural so the water seeps into the ground. That particular area, there has to be something there, you can see between the use, when it gets wet and people go over it, breaks it up, and then the water just rush, runs it out. Jim Cooleyard sent us some photos of where the dirt was when the parking lot was first built and where the dirt is now. You wouldn't believe how much dirt has been moved over the years through erosion. So is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment to paving this? Yes, Tim?
Just keep 12140 Maple Street here in Danellin. Based on the previous conversation about the Blue Run Park issue and all that, I'm assuming that it was found out that this is the city's responsibility.
So we looked into the management plan, and there's a shared responsibility between the city, county, and the state for minor repairs and maintenance, it's the city's responsibility for major. We would look to the county for assistance or participation in it.
Okay, so we're considering this minor?
I would consider this being minor, as we're only doing the entrance to cut back on everyday maintenance.
Sure. Okay, the other question I have is, at this point, well, I'm gonna put it different way, will this apron suffice the vendor issue if it doesn't get controlled right away as far as what's happening now with the previous, where we're getting, the previous piece getting busted up?
The work being performed in that swale area to redirect the water will naturally prevent anybody from parking in that right away unless they want to park side or tip it over sideways.
Okay, so it won't get broken up?
It shouldn't, it should not, as long as traffic is coming in and out in the direction of travel that it's intended, it should not break up as bad. However, counsel, also keep in mind that every apron comes to an end, so at the end of that, there'll be a little bit of lime rock and stuff that we have to maintain to keep it from wearing up back towards the street, but I feel comfortable that this is a good five, six-year repair with very little maintenance to follow.
If we don't have a lot of vendors driving over?
If we're not driving vendors and heavy, heavy stuff, you know, the single-use vehicles, small cars, trucks, pickup trucks, that should be just fine.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Then Mr. Bevver, I figured you'd want to comment on this.
Just a note, this project's been on our list for Blue Run Park for a very long time, probably 10 years, and we've been trying to do this, so it's really good news that Troy, you're getting to it now. So it's been needed for a long time, so it's good that you're getting to it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, council, let's make a motion in a second, we'll discuss and decide what we want to do.
I make the motion that city council authorize Forest Lottery to award the bid to
Rock and Roll.
Rock and Roll, thank you, asphalt company, an amount of up to $10,000.
We have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Ms. Williams. Any, I'll just leave it open, rather than go down the line, anyone who wants to discuss this? No discussion, we'll bring it to a close, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. All right, we are now at?
The only other thing is, I know y'all voted on it, but if they present us with an agreement, do you want to make a motion to go ahead and authorize the mayor to sign that agreement, or me to sign that agreement? I mean, I don't know what they're gonna give you, Troy, and I just want to be prepared, I don't want to hold up the project if there are documents that have to be signed.
There will not be on this particular project because it's under the 10,000, and he already is an established vendor with us, he understands the scope, and all I have is a quote identifying the material and labor required for it.
Okay, so there won't be a formal agreement?
No, we did not do engineering on this, this is a basic driveway entry, so we didn't go through the expense and time of engineering, and it is a short-term correction to save a lot of money in the long run.
Gotcha.
Until something permanent is done with the parking lot.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, we're at item number 14, council liaison reports.
We need a vote.
Oh, yeah, we already voted.
Yeah, we already voted, we all suggest. I have a motion in a second. We all suggest. And then you vote, okay, I missed out, I was thinking about that agreement.
This is, this is a short meeting so far. All right, number 14, council liaison reports. Let's start with you, Ms. Kennedy, do you have any, anything you would like to share with council?
No, other than I was very impressed with the people that showed up today and their enthusiasm for taking care of the park and making Danellin the wonderful place to live and to enjoy and to protect our, our river, and so I was very impressed with that.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Very good presentation there, but I would just like to add, we have problems on all of our streets.
We have problems with?
On all of our streets. That's all I wanted to say.
Just get in the city vehicle, Troy, and let him show you, and he'll make, your hair will turn black.
Oh, really? Where's the video?
That's a good one, you got me.
All right, Ms. Merritt?
Yes, I don't have a, that was cute, I don't have a way I was on before, and I'm not trying to belabor this evening, because I don't want to have a five-hour meeting like we did the other night, for a day. I do want to just make a comment, because I did have a citizen come up and ask me why I said something about the mayor statement that I was saying.
It's not necessary for me to hear.
No, 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 no.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm good.
No, sir, no, sir, this is from me, because the general public is, there were some that are saying things, and when a citizen came up to me and said that I said something negative about you, and I'll say something negative about you, I'll be like, oh, that's okay, but it was derogatory, and I just want to clear it out, just very quickly, that somebody said that I made a statement that you were taking illicit pictures of children, and that I was basically calling you out on not child pornography, but being of that sort. So I got this terrible. I went back and I watched the YouTube video, and I just want to make sure, and it's the last, it's like at three hour, or it's like at four hours, just at four hours when it happened, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that I never once, never once, said anything negative about the mayor, that I did not attack the character of the mayor, that I simply just said that I was disturbed, that I said that I was upset that some, that we had two letters written, that people's privacies felt like they were being invaded, and that is disturbing to them, and that was disturbing to me because we received the letters. And I said that, and my, my only thing that I said about children was, I would just hate for my kids to be part, to be put in public record forever and ever. That's all I'm saying, just let's take it down a little. Those were my comments. So if anybody doesn't believe that I never said anything derogatory about the mayor, and that I gave him, and I said I wanted to his, hear his side of the story, because I was just listening, I just read the notes, please go back and read and listen to my words out of my mouth and nobody else's mouth. And also, I never once said that I was not in favor of the ordinance that we followed, but that I simply asked, and again, it's on the video, I asked, is what they did breaking the rule. Y'all finished with your prime vote? Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure that if you don't believe, listen with your own ears to my exact words, I never once was derogatory to the mayor, and I even said to him, I hate bringing this up because there was no other way for me to do it, and I was shaking inside because I did not want him to feel bad.
Okay, I smear, appreciate you getting that up your shoulders, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's been totally proven that it's a felonious charge to be, but now that you've brought it up, which I intended to just walk away from it and leave it as it was, I think it's been fully debunked. Before you made your comments, how concerned you were about the photos, and went public and made it permanent public record with your concerns and how they could be construed to be inappropriate, did you, before you made those comments, did you actually look at the photos yourself?
Sir, I had that.
No, no, did you, did you, did you look at the photos yourself before you made those comments?
No, no, sir, this is not, it had nothing to do.
So you made comments, you made com, they have still talking, you got your chance. You made comments that suggested something nasty, and you hadn't even looked at the photos yourself before you said it?
Sir, I, I addressed, the letters were disturbing to me, that there were photos being taken, I didn't look at the photos, I didn't know where the photos were, I was upset about the letters that were sent in and about it, I wasn't upset, and I even said a thing about, you're always taking pictures, and I always were asked you about them, I never once said that they were illicit, I never said, I just said as a mom, and I'll just tell you, I worry about if you ever take a picture of somebody's, I just, I just want you to be careful, that's all I'm saying, is I just want you to be careful, and again, I'm not, I, I, I wasn't upset about, first of all, I knew you're not taking illicit photos, I was upset that we had visitors, and that's what I said, that we had visitors that wrote in letters, that they were upset. That was my concern, was that there were visitors to our city that were upset by the action that was being taken, not how you took the pictures, sir, because I know you would not do it in an illicit fashion, okay?
Okay, the more we talk about it, the more it makes of a story, and the less of a story.
And there was no story, it was about two letters.
This is, again, I smear, this is a conclusion of a wonderful public meeting. As we had our workshop, it was a conclusion of a four-hour grinding process where we worked hard together, and right as we're walking out the door, you're passing gas at the party.
Sir.
I just don't, I just don't know where you're going with this, so anyway, I'm done with, I'm done.
Stop, no, stop.
I'm done with it, I don't care.
No, sir, you just, you just, I'm not, I was trying to tell everybody, I was not trying to attack you, I was saying.
By talking about it, you're attacking.
I am not attacking, sir, but you.
If I pick out some of the delegates and I start saying, I saw you, I saw you doing something through your window, once I say that publicly, it's an attack.
Oh, sir, it was not.
You can't take back what you said, it's now out there.
I couldn't help that, I had two letters that upset me.
You should have a little bit, you've been on the council for many, many years, you should have better judgment than that, that's a, that's a slip of judgment. All right, you brought it up, I don't want to talk about it, I'm done with it, everybody knows it's ridiculous, so let's move on. Mandy, on my report, I just want to ask you, I have heard from a couple people, we are getting close to the elections, people are starting to decide whether or not they're gonna run, and I've had a couple people say that they've been trying to look up on our website, basic information on what they should do or be prepared to do, or whatever, and there is no information.
No, we actually took the page down temporarily because there are a lot of updates that have to occur before we can publish it again, we have to create the new schedule for this election year, update all of our candidate information with dates and rules and deadlines and things like that, it's a little time-consuming.
Well, the reason they're concerned is people are trying to decide whether or not to run based on the heaviness of what it requires to run, so the faster we get it up there, what they have to do, the better.
Our goal is to have it up by the end of the month, because we will declare the election in July, and the qualifying won't happen until mid-August.
Okay, very good, thank you. That's all I have to say. We go to number 15, department head reports. Anything new to add on top of what we just went over? Nothing? Ms. Odom?
I don't have anything, Troy.
Just a couple of quick updates, promise. Listen, this last Friday, the volunteers showed up, helped us with the project at Ernie Mills Park, I gave them a report, told you that it had been vandalized with some, you know, repeating, they completely repainted the entire pavilion in a couple of hours on Friday between the raindrops, very successful, very appreciated, a total of seven of them showed up. Number two, last week, maybe early the week before, we started receiving multiple complaints from alligator activity along the Blue Run Park walking trails.
What you saying?
So I'm gonna go back to when Tensewoman Williams first joined council, and she was always complaining about the wild dogs, now we have both two alligators running around the park. No, seriously though, we took complaints and concerns, but they're not serious, contacted FWC, we contacted Marion County, furloughs with the parks and recs, and greenways and trails, we notified the nuisance gator hotline, they sent out a tracker, on Sunday, they removed a six-and-a-half-foot alligator, and witnessed multiple other alligators in the park, one over nine feet. So they will continue to track or to do what they have to do to reduce the
Nine hours really?
Population of the alligators in and around the park, okay? So be very careful if you're out there.
I have a seat.
And then just moving forward with San Jose project, now the paint markings that you see out there, the orange, the blue, the green, they're all indicators of the utilities and underground services that are in that area, so that when we begin work, we don't rip up phone lines or water lines. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some signs up and then get the parking lot entrance done within four seconds.
Let me ask on that, either you or Chief, because of what we're dealing with, with the parking there, one of the complaints everyone has is we have sign pollution in Danellin, so that, that means up and downs of San Jose now, we're gonna have no parking signs up and down that road. I'm saying that, I'm just asking, I'm not complaining.
I honestly think we can get away with two signs for right now that are mounted to the speed limit signs, especially if we redo the swale on the, near the entrance of the park there.
So Chief, a question for you, is do the, do you have, like I know on a no trespassing sign, if you own rural property, you have to have no trespassing sign so many feet to be enforceable. I know that because I own rural property. So in order to have an enforcement of a no parking, do you have to have those signs placed every so many feet?
No, because I have verbally told them they cannot park there. And I agree with Troy, if he puts one more sign on the speed limit sign, we're good.
Okay, all right. We've got two speed limit signs on that road, one on one side, one on the other, they both have the big signs. I think we can address it then. If it's all right with council, we'll stick with the two signs we have.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
Was there any indication to you as to what time of day the alligators? I'm serious. Every day. Is there like a certain time of day that alligators have been seen?
Let's just say there's a certain type of year they become more active. Right now, we're in the wet season and we're in the rainy season. So those gators are a lot more active and a lot more attracted to activities because of food left behind and stuff like that. So I can't give you a good time of day, I do know this.
No, I was just wondering.
I walked this afternoon and personally seen four of them within 20 feet of the parking lot.
Well, Ms. Williams, I can tell you something that'll make you feel better. They have to be, you know, they have to be a certain size to pull you into the water.
I'm pretty sure.
I love that trail, I'm walking all the time, every morning.
The more activity that's actually on the trail, the less likely the gators are gonna come out, they don't attack rocks. So if you go out, I recommend that you at least stay on the trail.
I do.
On the paved trail, most importantly, but have a couple of people with you, and don't be afraid to make a little bit of noise as you go.
Don't be afraid to make a little bit of noise.
Oh, you're okay. You're okay.
I'm sorry, I go with you.
I'm sorry.
You'll be just fine, but stay on the, on the beaten path.
Stay on the street.
Okay, any other staff, any other staff reports? Department head reports? Okay, we go to, thank you very much, department heads, under number 16, city attorney report.
Counsel, this evening, I don't have anything in particular. You'll be seeing some ordinance coming forward and moving through planning, notably with the latest, some revisions to the sign ordinance, which will be coming up, but other than that, unless you have any questions for me?
We're looking forward to, seeing some activity on the short-term run since too, correct?
That's right.
So it looks like the planning commission is gonna have some work to do coming up pretty soon, correct?
Yes, sir.
Georgina, you have to, you've had enough time, you have to speed now, ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay. Anything else before we call adjourn? You have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
I have a second.
I have a second.